Good evening, I'm Kalamazoo Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain and welcome to tonight's Kalamazoo City Commission meeting of Monday, May 17th, 2021. Tonight's meeting is being streamed live on the City of Kalamazoo's Facebook page as well as the City of Kalamazoo's YouTube channel. You can listen to tonight's meeting by calling area code 269-552-6425 and entering meeting ID number 959-0697-9466 when prompted. And you can also call and leave a public comment for tonight's City Commission meeting by calling area code 269-226-6573. And I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mayor David Anderson.
Thank you very much Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain, I appreciate it. I want to call this meeting a regular business meeting of Monday, May 17th of the Kalamazoo City Commission to order. A good clerk Barling, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Cunningham.
Here in the city of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Hess.
I'm here in the city of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Knott.
Here at Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present in the city of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Urban.
Here in the city of Kalamazoo.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Here in the city of Kalamazoo.
Mayor Anderson.
Here in Kalamazoo. All present and accounted for, thank you clerk Barling. For our opening ceremony tonight, we have, we have an invocation which will be provided by Michelle Grossman from the Congregation of St. Joseph. Welcome.
Thank you Mayor Anderson and hello everyone on this tax day 2021. If you haven't filed your returns, you have what, five hours to get that done? Um, but have you ever stopped to think how we with our, our colonial origin story of rebellion against taxes ended up with an income tax? Well, the short story is that the newly created Republican Party and its standard bearer, Abraham Lincoln in 1861 implemented the first national income tax as a way to pay for civil war that was costing US Treasury $2 million a day. But there's more. As a young man, Lincoln set up shop in a town called New Salem, Illinois, where he and other hardworking people fell out of work and into debt when the Sangamon River silted up and none of them could afford the dredging that would have saved the town. This taught Lincoln as a young man that government by pooling resources could collectively do what no individual or small group could do. Fund projects for economic development and give ordinary people access to resources so that they could rise to economic security. And so, 160 years later, for Lincoln buffs, I think that's eight score, you may want to close your eyes and consider these words. Let us be grateful appreciating things regardless of monetary value. The warmth of the sun, the greening after rain, water in all its forms, liquid, solid and gas, a habitable planet and air to breathe, the wondrous expression of life found in each living thing. The resilience of the human race which has survived by collaboration. May we be wise in our appreciation, lavish in our care for our world including each other. And together we say amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for those thoughts and words to start our meeting, I appreciate that. We have three proclamations tonight and the order from the printed agenda, we're going to adjust just slightly, we're going to do them BCA in that order. And the first one is designating Kalamazoo as a talking is teaching city and that will be read by Commissioner Hess, Commissioner Hess.
Thank you Mayor. It really gives me great pleasure to introduce this, this proclamation on behalf of the City Commission. In the state of Michigan, the United States of America, a proclamation that Kalamazoo is a talking is teaching city. Whereas, Talking is Teaching is a nationally renowned, evidence-based, early literacy campaign through Too Small to Fail, which works to transform the early literacy development of young children by encouraging parents and caregivers to talk, read and sing with children ages zero to five. And whereas, the greatest brain development growth for a human being occurs between birth and five years of age, a time in the child's life in which parents or caregivers provide the most direct care. And whereas, the Michigan Department of Education has declared Michigan to be the first state to implement Talking is Teaching across counties, establishing the initiative within Kalamazoo's Great Start Collaborative at Kalamazoo RESA and whereas approximately 55% of Kalamazoo County children are not reading at proficiency levels by third grade and the global pandemic is expected to further impact children's social emotional wellbeing and early brain and literacy development. And whereas, Kalamazoo County Talking is Teaching is committed to improving children's early literacy development by empowering parents and caregivers with a simple message. Your everyday actions can make a real difference in the brain development of your young child by tuning in, talking more and taking turns. And whereas, these critical interactions can occur during simple everyday activities such as during bath time, be it bedtime while doing the laundry or going for a walk. Talking, reading, singing can make all the difference in a child's developing brain. And whereas, a correlation exists between the number of loving back and forth conversations with parents and a child's exposure to words by age three with eventual school performance and achievement. And whereas, the foundational partners of Kalamazoo County Talking is Teaching, including numerous programs within Kalamazoo RESA, Kalamazoo County Ready Fours, Kalamazoo Public Library, Kalamazoo Literacy Council and all Kalamazoo County School Districts find these strategies, tools and messaging critical to changing the trajectory of early literacy within Kalamazoo County. Now therefore, on behalf of the 53rd City Commission, I David Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo do hereby proclaim that Kalamazoo is a Talking is Teaching City as of May 17th, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you so much Commissioner Hess, a profoundly simple and yet so important message. We are honored to have Dave Campbell, Sarah Drum and Jen Stroven here representing Kalamazoo RESA. Are there some things that you would like to say?
Yes, I'd be honored to, thank you so much City, City Council for adopting that resolution. And David, you're right on, it is simple, but it is profound. And I just wanted to really read a quote by somebody a lot wiser than, than I am. Colin Powell said this, and sometimes you don't think of generals as, as being in line with these, this type thinking, but let me just read to you what General Powell says. Said, "All children need a laptop." Thought this is an interesting time to be saying that all children need a laptop. He said, "Not a computer, but a human laptop. Moms, dads, grannies, grandpas, aunts, uncles, someone to hold them, read to them, teach them. Loved ones who will embrace them and pass on their experience, their rituals, their knowledge of 100 previous generations. Loved ones who will pass on to the next generation their expectations of them, their hopes and their dreams." That's my signature quote and has been for several months on my email and it just hits me every day, the importance of treating each child with such levels of dignity and respect and part of that is just talking with them, it's going shopping with them, it's engaging with them and it just, it does so much in their development as the, as the resolution said. Very much like to thank Jen Stroven and, and Sarah Drum for their, their advocacy of the Talking is Teaching Initiative. And Jen and Sarah, if you'd like to say anything, the floor is yours.
Sure, um, thank you so much, this was wonderful to hear out loud and a lot to hear out loud. But every one of those statements is so important and so critical. And I know Jeff Chamberlain had a document that we thought we would share and there's a reason we wanted to share it as this is a campaign about messaging and reaching parents. We wanted to show you that imagery, which we hope will be everywhere. It will be in pediatric offices and grocery stores and on billboards and yard signs throughout the city, maybe at government buildings too, where it will remind parents, oh yeah, if I just talk, read or sing a little bit more, I can change the trajectory of their school achievement, of their performance, of their success later on in life, especially during those critical years of zero to, zero to five. So we wanted to show you that imagery and then also introduce you to our major initiative this summer, which is our family literacy walks. So very grateful to the Parks and Recs Department who has worked with us to help identify the great places where families typically gather as well as the events that are hosted. You can see that they're taking place in other areas of the county as well. And this is a great COVID safe opportunity for families to come out and receive some early literacy tools and books and enjoy a walk, which is showcases this imagery once again and provides an opportunity for families to have that engagement and that talking back and forth. So we just wanted to inform you all and the general public of these opportunities and we're just very grateful for the proclamation and for your support. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you being with us tonight, thank you. Our next proclamation is for Gun Violence Awareness Day, it's going to be read by Commissioner Cunningham. And I believe that Rick O'Million and Reverend Linda McDonald from Moms Demand Action are here to accept that proclamation and make some comments afterwards. Commissioner Pradel.
Well, I think I look a little better than Commissioner Pradel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm not going to take sides on that. Commissioner Cunningham, I'm sorry.
Thank you Honorable Mayor David Anderson. So, you know, I am honored to read this on behalf of the city. Our proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 4th, 2021. Whereas every day, more than 100 people, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. Michigan has 1,212 gun deaths every year with a rate of 12.1 deaths per 100,000 people. Michigan has the 31st highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas, cities across the nation, including in Kalamazoo, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions and protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, the COVID-19 health pandemic facing America has drastically impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms results in increased risk in intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun and unintentional shootings. And whereas, to honor the Americans whose lives are cut short due to gun violence and the countless survivors who are injured by shooting, shootings, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 4th, 2021 as the Seventh National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 4th, 2021, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to help firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, on behalf of the 53rd City Commission, I Eric Cunningham, in place of the Honorable Mayor David Anderson, do hereby declare June 4th, 2021 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Kalamazoo and encourage all citizens to support our community efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
Thank you Commissioner Cunningham. So I, we have our guests here tonight to accept that, who are individuals who've been working for years and years on this, I appreciate your commitment.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Rick O'Million, I'm here with my wife Martha. And we're here as members of Moms Demand Action, the Kalamazoo Group. And we've been involved in many groups, our daughter, since our daughter was killed in 1999, you know, murder homicide on the campus of Kalamazoo College. Or suicide. Just wanted to point out that wear orange is a commitment that the city has, has the proclamation that they have promoted since 2016, I believe. So you've done this every year, remembering victims of gun violence in our area and also across the United States. It started off with celebration of Hidea Pendleton's life and death in Chicago in 2013 after she had participated in the second inauguration of President Obama. She came back to Chicago and was shot in the playground area around her home. Her friends designated June 4th, which would have been her 18th birthday as the first Wear Orange Day. And since then, it's really grown, as Eric mentioned. Lot of different organizations do a lot of different things. And in Kalamazoo, there are a lot of groups and organizations you heard from GVI, I think it's your last committee of the whole meeting before today about the work that they're doing. And there are lots of groups working on the trauma that gun violence brings to families of survivors and also the people that are involved in the shootings and that witnessed them. So we appreciate the commitment again this year, the second time in virtualness of the Sid Commission to honor and designate National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 4th. Linda, do you want to add anything?
I want to add my thanks to the City Commission of Kalamazoo for acting yet again. And we really appreciate the support that you all have given over the years to this incredible effort. As I was listening to the words in the proclamation ahead of this one, let's talk, read and sing, wouldn't that be so much better than families having to bury loved ones and grieve gun violence in our county and in our city? So I, I just wanted to lift up all the folks that are involved with what we're doing. We're having an event online on June the 9th, which you will all be invited to, it's a Facebook Live event to actually name names of those who have died from our community and remember them and remember survivors of gun violence who live in our area and who are dealing with the after effects. And I want to especially thank the Galilee Baptist Church, the NAACP, GVI, Isaac of course, and their Gun Violence Prevention Task Force, the Coalition for Common Ground, which came about after Sandy Hook in 2012, and Moms Demand Action and all of you because we're all part of the solution to gun violence. So I thank you again for your support.
Thank you Reverend McDonald. I have, I just do want to say thank you, Rick, and your wife for keeping doing this work. I think perhaps one way to approach it would be try not to think about it again and you keep doing the work and keep focused on it. My daughter, who knew your daughter well, was an RA on the floor where your daughter lived on that day when that occurred. And I just want to remind people that the results of something like this are not just felt by the family. These are results that reverberate far and wide. And I think there were many of her fellow students there who will, will always be affected by this, but certainly really reeled from the repercussions of that. So thank you for your continued work and effort.
Thank you.
Our last proclamation for this evening is the Justice Against Bullying at School, Jabs Month. I'm not sure if we have anyone here tonight to accept that. Doesn't look like it, but Commissioner Pradel, you're set to read this, so it's to you, sir.
Sure, I know Gwen Hooker would have loved to have been here tonight. I know she gave a compassionate speech yesterday at the Stop Asian Hate Rally in downtown Bronson Park. So I know you are here in spirit Gwen, so I'll go ahead and read here. This is Justice Against Bullying at School or Jabs Awareness Month, which is June 2021. Whereas, Justice Against Bullying at School or Jabs has served the youth impacted by bullying in Kalamazoo since 2006. And whereas during this time, Jabs has raised awareness and provided education, support and empowerment to over 200 youth who have been affected by bullying in some way. And whereas, Jabs strongly supports the inclusion of students in the development of anti-bullying policymaking processes and provides a platform to form and organize student groups to advocate for their own right to be safe and from bully-free and nonviolent education space. And whereas, anti-bullying initiatives like Jabs are proving to be transformative and combating childhood traumatic events of bullying in academic environments as well as enhancing better outcomes for students. Now therefore, on behalf of the 53rd City Commission, I David F. Anderson, Mayor of City Kalamazoo, do hereby recognize June 2021 to be Justice Against Bullying at School or Jabs Awareness Month and call on all citizens to recognize and support this effort of strengthening our community and holding on to the promise for everyone, especially school-aged youth of Kalamazoo.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Pradel. Commissioners, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any changes Commissioners would like to see? All right, seeing no changes, communication, City Manager Ritzma.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the opportunity for public comments, Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain, do we have public comments?
Yes, sir, we do, we've got a few of them and we'll begin them right away.
My name is Greg Woods, I own a business in Kalamazoo, Michigan. I own grub and stuff, grub and stuff eatery located at 701 Riverview Drive at Hotop. The reason I am addressing you is because the city's homeless population on Hotop have, I am a person with, that has respect for everyone, however, this is becoming increasingly more difficult because of their actions. They come on the property, they confront our customers, asking many of them for money, food, cigarettes, you name it, they're very disrespectful. They have broken into our van, taken our wood that we use for smoking, our meats, they go through the dumpsters, leaving debris all over the place. They come into the building, won't leave when asked to. And this past Sunday night, we had a very disrespectful person come in, we asked them to leave. After about 30 minutes, she decided to leave, but before she left, she took her nail polish bottle and threw it through my glass door, leaving me with about an $800 bill. So I guess, I think we all know what many of the homeless folks do. The question I have for you folks is when are you going to do something about the problem? You know, this is, this has been going on for too long. All you do is move them from place to place. We need you to fix the problem, we elected you to do something, fix the problem. These homeless people are, they're just taking over this place. I need help. Somebody's going to get hurt down that way. If you have, if you need me, just contact me for anything, my phone number is 269-998-4075. Again, my name is Greg Woods.
Please remove item nine regarding pawnbrokers from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda so that the public may comment on it. My comments on that follow. Jeff Messer, city resident. I want to call the public's attention to the fact that the City Commission is being asked to amend Chapter 24 of City Ordinances regarding pawnbrokers, secondhand dealers, junk and recycling dealers and precious metal and gem dealers. Reading from the consent agenda, reading from the agenda report for this item. The City Attorney's Office has undertaken a comprehensive review of the Kalamazoo City Code to update and revise current ordinances. The Police Department has requested changes regarding the record-keeping and identification requirements and electronic filing requirements. The proposed amendments would add the requirements of a photo description and the amount paid for an item to the record-keeping requirements for pawnbrokers, secondhand dealers and precious metal and gem dealers. These additional requirements would make it easier for public safety to identify lost or stolen property. The proposed amendments would also require pawnbrokers, secondhand dealers and precious metal and gem dealers to electronically report the required information within 24 hours using the program or website that is specified by the police, violation of which would result in a municipal civil infraction. Currently, KDPS has implemented the use of Leads Online, which is an online-based program where businesses would upload the required information. KDPS is paying for the subscription cost of the program and the use of the program would not be an additional cost to the businesses. The use of the program would make it easier and faster for KDPS to search for and locate stolen property. The City Commission intends to take a final vote on these amendments at their next meeting on Monday, June 7th. Any person who wishes to shape this section of City Ordinance should speak up now or at that meeting in three weeks. Thank you.
My name is Sadee Chambers, I am a City of Kalamazoo resident and I just want to thank you guys for your time tonight. And the reason why I'm calling tonight is to express my concern about the federal funds that will be coming into the City of Kalamazoo. And I hope that you guys as the Commissioners and the Mayor take into consideration the true needs of this city. And with the temporary funds that will be coming in, I hope that you guys really take into account residents' needs, the needs of the city and that we spend this money wisely. I hope that you take into, I hope that you take in residents' comments and I hope that you reach out to the community and really ask us what we need so that these funds can be spent wisely because we only have them for a limited time and we don't need to waste them on things that won't benefit the city as a whole. So I hope that you guys think about that and really start figuring out what it is you guys, what your action plan is going to be and that you really do reach out to residents in this community so that the funds can be spent wisely. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you so much, bye.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you Deputy City Manager Chamberlain. So, I presume with that request, will we be moving item G9 to the regular agenda?
Correct, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. So, City Manager Ritzma, our consent agenda, please.
All right, we have nine items for approval this evening. First is the approval of a contract with Balcoma Construction for improvements at Martin Luther King Junior Park in the amount of $178,178. Next is the approval of a contract with Peerless Midwest Company to perform well rehabilitation and associated maintenance in 2021 in the amount of $183,100. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with LD Dosa in the amount of $210,782.50 to provide helicopyers to structurally support the centrifuge platform at the wastewater treatment plant. Next is the appointment of Aaron Powers as City Assessor under the provisions of Charter Section 51 effective June 1, 2021, and approval of a two-year contract extension with effective June 1, 2021, and approval of a two-year contract extension with Wayne County Appraisal LLC doing business as WCA assessing for city assessor slash assessor of record services in the amount of $233,790. Next is the approval of a cooperative purchase of a Truvac Vector Hydro Excavation Truck from Jack Dohany Company in the amount of $462,924.65. Next is the approval of a sole-source purchase with Ferguson Waterworks to provide and install Neptune Water Meters in the amount of $1,130,783.5. Next is the approval of a contract extension with Wayne County Appraisal LLC doing business as WCA assessing for assessing services in the amount of $643,710. Next is the approval of a one-year contract extension with Waste Management of Michigan for loading, hauling, disposal of belt press solids in the amount of $6,208,710. And finally, approval of the appointments of Mayor David Anderson, Mr. Sid Ellis, and Mr. Jim Eskamia to the Utility Policy Committee.
Thank you, City Manager Ritzma. So Commissioners, the requested action is to approve items 1 through 8 and item 10, and authorize the City Manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
Removed.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess, or supported by Commissioner Pradel. Clerk Barley, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners and Vice Mayor. The consent agenda items are approved. Manager Ritzma, for the regular agenda.
Item G9, first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 24 of the Kalamazoo City Code regarding pawnbrokers, secondhand dealers, and junk and recycling dealers.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there anyone who would care to provide any staff report details on this item?
Well, I, I, I think that Mr. Messer covered it well. This is City Attorney Clyde Robinson. In that large, in large measure, this is part of the ongoing effort of my office to update the city code. Largely, there have been changes in this area of the law, both in terms of statutory law and case law, as well as conversing with the Public Safety Department with things in place that would make it easier to trace stolen items. So, as a result of that update that was done by Sarah Wenzlick and my staff, this matter is being presented to the Commission for adoption.
And so, tonight is first reading, correct, Attorney Robinson?
Correct.
As all ordinances need to come to the City Commission twice, so this is the first reading this evening.
That's correct. It'll come back on June 7th if it's approved this evening.
Any other, any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Pradel.
Sure. City Attorney Robinson, can you just share a little bit more about, I mean, was this just part of sort of the, you know, city code kind of audit that you guys are undergoing or updates, or was it by, you know, trying to align better with, with the state? Or, you know, can you share a little bit about more about what was the impetus for this?
The, the impetus was, it was part of our ongoing work, and then once, and we, what we did, we took the, the whole city code and between the attorneys, we kind of broke it up. So, it's kind of, if there was a particularly large chapter, that person got a smaller one to work on. As opposed to kind of some, you might, if you got some medium-sized, you might get a few more. So, it was, we, we broke up the work amongst us, and this particular chapter was assigned to Ms. Wenzlick. And as a result of that worksheet, did the research in terms of, okay, what's the state law on secondhand goods, pawnbrokers, precious gem dealers, looked at the case law, statutory law, and also had conversations with a public safety staff.
Other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Pradel, yes.
Does anybody know if any conversations, if anybody was able to have conversations with any individuals from the industries impacted?
I don't know if Ms. Wenzlick did or not. There's not that many in town, and for the most part, they are governed by state law. And what we've done is, in large measure, mirror that. So, there's, there should be nothing new. And in fact, depends on, in all candor, there are some dealers that are very cooperative with the Public Safety Department, others not so much.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Commissioners. So, the motion is to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 24 of the Kalamazoo City Code regarding pawnbrokers, secondhand dealers, and junk and recycling dealers. Is there such a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Urban, supported by Commissioner Cunningham.
Support.
Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk Barley, please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pradel.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I'd encourage if there are any people in the industry who, you know, are watching this or hear about this meeting to, you know, reach out if they have any input and or if anybody just has any interest in the topic. So, that's all I was going to share.
Thank you. Clerk Barley, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion is approved. City Manager Ritzma.
Item H1 is acceptance of the recommendations of the Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo, otherwise known as SPK Organizing Committee, and approval of the Organizing Committee Proposals and Budgets for the SPK High Impact Fund.
And thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a staff report on this item?
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor, and I want to recognize, oh, we got Commissioner.
Question, Commissioner Cunningham.
I just, I know we could say SPK, but can we say the entire, entire title for the community at large? My apologies for interruption.
Sure. It's the Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo Organizing Committee.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma.
Yeah, and actually, this, thank you for explaining that or making me explain that because it actually starts back when I, goes back to when I first became city manager and my first commission retreat dealt with setting priorities for me and my administration. And one of those was ending generational poverty. And there was quite a bit of discussion about how can we do that as an administration, you know, as a, as a goal. And, but that, that stuck with, with us, and rightly so. And has evolved into what today is the Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo Organizing Committee and the great work they're doing, which is largely supported by the Foundation for Excellence. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kevin Ford, our Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo Coordinator, and he'll give you a brief presentation.
Welcome, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Ritzma, for setting that up as well. I'm going to share a screen. I think I'm going to be sharing a screen. I have that capability, right? Okay. Okay, can everybody see what I'm sharing? All right, great. Clear, if anything is unclear throughout, just let me know. I'll make necessary adjustments. We used some notes as well. But again, want to thank you all for having me on, on the regular agenda to discuss a bit about SPK and offer recommendations from our organizing committee regarding the High Impact Fund. So, agenda for this presentation, I'll provide a two-generation overview, process overview of the process we just completed to reach this point tonight. Recommendations, of course, while we're here for the night, and then some questions and answers, and open it up. I try to keep this brief and to the point to allow for as much discussion or conversation as needed. I prefer to have a conversation as opposed to presentation. Gives me concern if I'm the only one talking for too long. So, with that, we'll jump right into it, a two-generation overview. And want to provide, again, just high-level overview of what this means, where we're at with it. It occurred to me that some folks on the City Commission and in the community, this may be a new term for them. But with this round of support from Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo, we really wanted to focus on the two-gen approach. And in short, two-generation approach is a strategy or strategies that address the need of children and the adults or parents in their lives together, right? Sounds intuitive, but in practice, not as robust as it should be, or we like to see in our community. Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo's exposure to two-gen approach comes from a senior out of the Aspen Institute who's engaged in this two-gen work for at least a decade. And EKC Foundation has also contributed much to the two-generation field. Our SPK Organizing Committee voted to adopt this approach in 2019 as a lens for the way we conduct our local work. And so, the next few slides are going to encompass some high-level elements related to two-generation work. So, the first slide is a two-generation continuum. And it has child-focused, the parent elements, parent-focused with child elements. Much of the programming in our community and nationally tends to silo program participants generational, generationally. And so, the two-gen approach really seeks to incorporate and leverage for efforts from both populations and both generations to support the well-being of the whole family. And a note on language, we use two-generation again from our exposure from Aspen Institute, which you see on the slide, is whole family. It could be whole family, family-centered, family-focused, multi-generational. All of these are synonyms for the two-generation approach. We want to connect, we'll connect, incorporate, and leverage the various efforts from both sides again to support the well-being of the entire family. These are two-generation principles. We're trying to slowly but surely build these out in the future of SPK work, leaning into these principles. So, measuring and accounting for outcomes for both children and their parents or adult caregivers, fostering innovation and evidence together. So, really taking on a learning mindset, a growth mindset, opportunity mindset. We want to starve problems and feed solutions. So, how can we do that in a more robust manner together, engaging and listening to the voices of families? I know that's an important element for folks around our SPK table and indeed, City Commission and folks in our community. How can we align and link systems and funding streams? So, you know, although we'll talk about programs and programming tonight, ultimately, we want to elevate to systems-level change. And so, how can we align and link systems to better be coordinated, conserving vulnerable populations and families in the community, and throughout it all, ensuring equity in those processes, practices, and opportunities. This next slide represents two-generation components. These are largely the domains that represent cycles for intergenerational opportunity. And so, you know, really looking at how can we connect these things that, taking in aggregate, really support family well-being and put folks on a trajectory to move from poverty to prosperity, right? So, you know, how can we connect early childhood sectors with other sectors and systems in our community? I use this example a lot. We have a local workforce development program that only deals with adults, which is great. They do phenomenal work at that, but some of their adult participants have children, have youth. What do we know is happening in their lives? How are they accessing quality education opportunities? And how are we looking at that in terms of the whole family and moving them towards prosperity and upward mobility in our community? So, hopefully, these three slides, these graphics will become familiar as we, again, build out this work and educate folks in our community around this two-generation approach. And we really look at this approach for this, this round of support from Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo. And these are the domains I just showed you, and those components, how they line up with the SPK-focused areas of family, youth, and jobs. I forgot to put the K-12 in there, but that would be youth, family as well. And so, it's, it's just a natural fit for Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo and the ethos of it to really look at supporting whole-family advice to do an approach. Now, I want to talk about our process overview, give a brief description on how that came to be, what we did and timeline associated with that in terms of the support recommendations. And so, here's a timeline. We started this particular funding project in December 2020. I think December 7th, our regular SPK Organizer Committee meeting. We formed a Funding Review Subcommittee. Some volunteers from our Organizer Committee took part in that. We had our inaugural meeting of the Funding Subcommittee in December. It was kind of challenging with the holidays, but to their credit, we got that meeting on the calendar and done before the end of the year so we can move forward with the project. And so, at that inaugural meeting, I laid out the project timeline, milestones, major deliverables, roles and responsibilities of Subcommittee members and staff, myself, and we had a communications plan in terms of stakeholders in which we communicated with in the frequency, you know. So, city staff, Organizer Committee, other folks in the community, yourself. I know I provided some updates via the Friday emails that I sent out to CMO and City Commission. So, all that was done in December. In January, we posted, we achieved the milestone of posting our LOI. LOI is a letter of interest or letter of inquiry, and our funding guidelines online for the public to access. So, we had a link to that. We distributed that information and promoted that opportunity through the regular city organization communications channels. We had some partners that shared on their communication channels as well. I did a radio interview. We had a media release, and it was a very short time. It was a very short window, about two weeks. Admittedly, wasn't quite as long as, as we would have liked it to be. But that was what the committee came up with. So, within two weeks, we promoted, pushed it, and posted the LOI and funding guidelines online. And so, organizations had to follow the link, sign up, username, password to access the LOI elements and instructions. We had a technical assistance document if an organization had not filled out a LOI before. And we had the funding guidelines in there in terms of what we were looking for, SPK background, two-generation approach explanations, and definition of terms, right? So, all of that was done in January. LOI was due in February by 5:00 PM. And so, with that, I want to highlight some of the elements that were involved with the LOI. It was basically to determine, like, good fit for an organization. Some of y'all may be familiar, but with a lot of nonprofits, they feel Some of y'all may be familiar, but with a lot of nonprofits, they fill out these long applications only to find out later after putting all this time in. Not really a good fit. So the L O I phase was determined, was established to kind of streamline the process and determine fit upfront. So folks wouldn't have to spend a lot of time putting in a multi page application only to find out it wasn't what folks are looking for. And so with that, L O I, it was eleven elements in it. First is the eligibility assessment. Basically, are you a five oh one C three? If not, do you have a fiscal sponsor or fiduciary that is a five oh one C three? And will your work cover at least one or more of our S B K target neighborhoods, east side, Edison, north side? And so organizations had to answer those. If it wasn't an affirmative for all of them, they were, they were moving on to the L O I process. So with that, you know, we asked dollar amount being requested, project name, how this ties to S B K goals. The neighborhood served. The services provided, populations impacted, time to complete a program, a project, expected results. And if they are received, if they are receiving or have to receive other supports from any entities in the community. And so that made up the L O I. Again, folks responded to that. We had our review process and contacted specific organizations who were then invited to submit applications. And with the application phase, there were around nine questions we asked. It was different from the L O I, but taken in aggregate, it gave us a nuanced texture, the more holistic picture of what we were looking at. And so with the application process or application phase in particular, we asked, you know, we got to budget information, particularly what specific two generation components with the program or project addressed. So the previous slide I shared in terms of the domains, those were in the dropdown feature. What organize, what other organizations in the city or the county provide same or similar services? Wanted to mitigate, mitigate any duplication. Who are you collaborating with in terms of serving S B K neighborhood residents? And what is the organization actively doing to combat racism through its work? This was a salient point for organizing committee members. So asking organizations that. And all these questions we asked, application, L O I was, were established strategically, not only to get information needed and that would be useful, but also again, thinking of growth mindset and opportunity mindset. What opportunities we could connect organizations to strengthen their work? And so that happened in March. It was a longer window for the application to be completed, about three or four weeks. That took place. The subcommittee was able to deliver its main deliverable, submitting recommendation to the organizing committee in a special meeting in April. And they supported the recommendations that put, that were put forth. The applicants were then contacted with next steps. And throughout this entire process, I took on project management type of view and perspective. And so all stakeholders were regularly communicated with in terms of project status, updates, reports, our financial position. So everybody got little slices of information. So when it time, when the time came in April, nobody was blindsided or bewildered or had, you know, any type of, I didn't know what was going on. Communicated early and often with folks to keep, to keep everything on track. And so here we are in May with recommendations to city commission. And I will be contacting all applicants with next steps within this week. That kind of timeline and process overview. Next slide represents some numbers relevant to this process. So we got twenty three total inquiries. And that means twenty three organizations engaged with online process, set up accounts. If they didn't already have them, we worked with United Way in their grant management software system. So some of the applicants already had their information in that system. But out of that twenty three, fifteen completed and submitted L O Is. Some didn't start, some didn't finish within the deadline. And out of that fifteen, eight were invited to submit the application. And all eight, a hundred percent submitted or completed those applications. So total amount requested was over two point three million. And this is the, the total out of the twenty three. The eight applicants requested, I think, a little bit over two point one million. And out of those eight, sixty three percent are BIPOC led organizations, so executive directors, BIPOC led. So next slide, reason why we're here tonight, recommendations. And I'll leave this screen on as I, I'm a provide a brief, high level overview of each of the organizations and what, what they put forth. And then explain the bullet points below.
Kevin, this is Jeff Chamberlain. We're having some technical difficulties on your slides. I'm going to try to pull up a different one. I know some folks are having a hard time reading it, so.
Okay.
Apologize.
Sweet.
Is that, is that better?
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, Kevin, just let me know and I'll advance it for you.
All right. I appreciate that, Jeff. I'm sorry for that as well. Okay. So like I said, I'll give a overview of each one of these organizations and what they put forth. And then explain the bullet points as well, as this part, the bullet points are part of the total recommendation as well. And so first is Kalamazoo County Ready Force, also known as K C Ready Force. And they have a preschool based family supports project, looking to increase the number of three year olds and provide tuition assistance. The geography is the Edison, the east side neighborhoods. The pilot element includes a family advocate who will be on site at the preschools. And this family advocate will work directly with families to build relationships and help the adults of those young learners on a variety of topics, including professional and personal goals. Next one is the Kalamazoo Literacy Council. Their project is Parent Literacy Together, a multi generational approach to learning. They will be concentrated in the Edison neighborhood. This is a program that seeks to strengthen and expand multi generational learning activities in that neighborhood. Joint led parent literacy program. And also looking to improve academic attainment outcomes for both the adults and the youth learners that engage with that program. Next one is Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services, K N H S. Their project is Pathway Home Partnership. This is a partnership with Open Doors of K N H S seeking to operate barrier removal for homeownership, increased financial capabilities, education and coaching and home buyer education. And they want to also introduce a match savings program within this pathway home partnership. The next one is K Risa and the program is My City Two Gen. K Risa already operates the My City program, which is a summer youth employment program. The pilot element here is taking those youth from the target neighborhoods and creating a cohort of adult participants that will be focused on career coaching and other aspects of workforce development training. The next one is North Side Association for Community Development, N A C D, and residents implementing our plan collaborative. This is basically a neighborhood based workforce development training program. S B K had provided funding for this. I updated city commission sometime ago in terms of the C and A, the Patient Care Academy that was done at the N A C D. They want to expand upon that and increase it around not only healthcare field, but construction and technology as well. The next one is Parents for Transition. This project is dismantling generational curses. It will be in the east side neighborhood. And this is a family, this is a parent and youth workshop primarily for youth with invisible disabilities to teach both parent and youth how to advocate for those children, youth with invisible disabilities. And also to learn how to develop realistic goals for after high school graduation. The next one is Rooted. Program name is Rooted Generational Health. And I think they'll be concentrated in the east side neighborhood. This is going to be focused on BIPOC, Black Indigenous, people of color, centered healing, family empowerment, social emotional learning, and also healthcare component in terms of accessing healthcare and accessible doula, doula access. The last one is Y W C A. It's an early childhood business incubation exploration into best baby zone on the north side, in the north side neighborhood. And essentially they're looking to create a unique pathway to entrepreneurship within the early childhood field. Some of this is happening in Edison neighborhood with the Creamery Project. Y W C A is involved in that as well. But they want to introduce this component on the north side. So those are the eight organizations that submitted applications for this round and then during this process. And I want to explain the bullet points. Highlight that. So first bullet point in terms of customized grantee partner supports. What I just explained with the organizations is related to direct human service program delivery. But the customized grantee partner supports incorporate a theme from trust based philanthropy known as Support Beyond a Check. And so in addition to the direct service program delivery, identifying other opportunities that may be valuable for the organization's growth. So it could include staff well being, organizational development, social media strategy, making connections to other funders in the community or helping the grantee partners define their work to external audiences. Also bringing together like minded groups who may be committed to the same mission but weren't yet connected. And so these are things, again, outside the typical direct service provision. These are things that we have to refine based on conversations with the organization and what they identify as being value add and see in which ways we can support that. The next bullet point is around media narrative work. And so all of these bullet points have been talked about and discussed around the S B K table for some time. We just haven't really pulled the trigger on applying any funding to it until now. And, you know, it's, it's no, no greater time than now considering everything is happening. And so every human service agency effort in our community is involved in some type of community change work, right? If they achieve their mission, their vision, our community will be changed in a positive way. Inherent to that is, you know, the narratives and stories that are being created, driven, crafted. And what, what stories are we telling? What narratives are we creating in that work? And S B K is no exception, right? So when we talk about families who are struggling with poverty, who are struggling with financial insecurity, who are working part of that Alice population, asset limited, income constrained and employed population. What stories are we telling? What narratives are we creating to get more people involved in this work? To get more of the community involved in this work and to help us move this work forward. So it's really a community, a community push. And so some of that, it could be, of course, partnering, like any red blooded American, I, I like a deal. So if we can get folks to partner and help us move that work low to no cost, that's great. But some things may occur at cost, right? And so we want to explore like what that looks like and put our, put our money where our mouth is regarding that. The last bullet point responding to urgent community needs. Again, this is something that has been talked about a lot around our table and what that can look like for S B K in particular. And there's been an appetite to engage in that work. Cities already partnering with United Way and Community Foundation in terms of having an urgent, urgent needs fund. This money is not to that level by any extent, but definitely want to explore how we can potentially be value add in that, in that area. And so that sixty four thousand represents a total for all three of those bullet points. It's not a lot of money admittedly, but again, it's enough for us to start to see, you know, what we can learn from engaging in, in those, in those types of efforts. Oh, next slide. I'm sorry. I forgot. I lost control. And so this next slide is just lessons learned from this process that we've just completed. Specific to this process, but there are intersections, of course, with the larger S B K initiative that are applicable. First, communicate early and often to relevant stakeholders. Like I said, when the inaugural meeting of the subcommittee, we laid out the, the timeline, roles and responsibilities, communications plan, who, who we would be talking to and how often. And, you know, communicating to the organizing committee members, so nobody's in the dark. And communicating to the folks that engaged with the process, all of the organizations. And so this was very helpful in terms of, like I said, mitigating any type of blindsiding, mitigating any type of confusion that, you know, folks didn't know what was going on, et cetera. On the second thing, remaining open and responsive to stakeholder concerns. So again, I took a project management approach with this, multiple stakeholders involved. I had an open door policy and being open and responsive allowed us to adjust when needed to complete this project. The next one was continue to improve user experience. We don't talk about it much in that light, but everybody that engages with S B K and this initiative, we are creating experiences, right? Good, bad or different. And so we want those experiences to be value add. Want those experiences to be positive, fruitful. One of the reasons why we made some tweaks based on feedback from our first round was again, to kind of improve that user experience, not only for organizations in the community, community members, the volunteers on organizing committee and the subcommittee as well. On the next one was leveraging technology and advancing the work. Want to engage in more of this. This is value add certainly with this process that we just completed. Having the technology or access to it helped immensely in smoothing out the work. But also in the future, want to leverage all type of different tech, technology platforms to communicate with the community, get more community involved, but also recognizing there would be some challenges with that in, in terms of folks just having raw access to computers, internet, and also people's level of technological savvy. But definitely we have all this technology at our fingertips. Definitely want to leverage that in terms of moving the work forward. And lastly, holding supporting organizations accountable and sharing information about the opportunities. Like I said, we have some folks around the table that helped out with that, but folks that support S B K work, they should be sharing it in order to cast a broad and wide net for folks to understand opportunities available. for folks to understand opportunities available. And that accountability is two-way street, right? Three hundred and sixty degrees. So if you are a partner, you help the SBK and the city move this work forward. The city should also be promoting other things in the community from those organizations to help folks out as well. So again, just some lessons learned. We learned some lessons the first round, but want to take on a growth mindset, a learning mindset in order to focus on continuous improvement and refining processes to make us better at doing this work. Next slide, please. So next questions and answers, want to open it up for you all if you have any. Before that, I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly acknowledge all the folks that helped get us to this point tonight. Our organizing committee, our review subcommittee, folks in the community that I reached out to to share this opportunity, city staff that supported, even though I'm the only city staff officially designated for SBK. And also Heather Rittenhouse from the United Way. She was the person that helped us with all the technology challenges and technology work. I know it's part of her job, but you know, she went above and beyond, answered all crazy questions I had and was totally open for any type of support. So with that, open it up for folks.
Mr. Ford, real quick here. Thank you so much for your description of this work that's been happening really for years, but in a most focused way for months and months now. And I don't want, I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't know if you have the list of names who are, of the folks who are on the Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo Committee. Do you happen to have those names you could share with us, sir?
I do. I'll start with our honorable vice mayor, Patrice Griffin is one. Bobby Hopewell, Carol McGlin, Kim Hollers. I'm going off, oh, Bea Damaro, Sakia Lee, Shalana Lewis, who stepped down, was with the Community Foundation, but she stepped down. She's moving to DC, but she was a part of this process. We have a new member, Jonathan Pulli, who was part of this process as well. Who else? Alyssa Stewart from the United Way. I think that's it.
Thank you so much. So our direct thanks go out to all of the members as well. In particular, our vice mayor. People sometimes ask, well, what other things do you do besides just serving on the commission? This is obviously something that's been very intensive that our vice mayor has been participating in. Thank you, Vice Mayor Griffin.
I forgot. It's Brenda Hughes and Don Cody as well.
All right.
And I'm gonna make sure, I will make sure I get this right because it's on the city website. I will make sure I get this right because I will not be alive if I don't.
Didn't mean to trip you up on that.
No, it's fine. It's fine.
So are there questions for Mr. Ford from commissioners? Commissioner Pradel.
Hey Kevin, thanks for the presentation tonight and lifting up all this information as well. I was just curious if you could share maybe a little bit more about, you know, post-implementation with these organizations and, you know, looking at what success looked like and those sort of metrics. If you could share a little bit more about that.
You said post-implementation? Yeah, so one of the things that we're doing is working with Upjohn to help refine that. Like I said, measuring for, measuring for outcomes for families can be challenging for a number of reasons. It takes time and so, and because human service delivery is to a large extent generational silo, it can be difficult to find, you know, good operating platforms that could easily work with both parents and children together. And so Upjohn is helping us refine that and work out, you know, how we can become better at that. And there's been in our community data system, longitudinal data system, but in the short term, how can we get better at doing that, right? And so, you know, we'll be looking at some things that we can track, you know, participation, how many neighborhood residents from our target neighborhoods we're looking at.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, it's great, you know, to be able to hear some of the success stories and what the organizations have done over the course of the year, the two years that the funds are utilized. So thanks.
Right. And so part of that narrative piece that I lifted up, it will encompass that, right? I want to elevate and amplify not only voices of participants, but the organizations and the work that they're doing and share some of those stories and glean some insight on, again, how can we refine coordinating more effectively at the system level?
Other questions for Mr. Ford? Tell, see you right off the bat. I have a quick, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor. And I actually don't have a question. There's a lot of this because I'm on the organizing committee. I know, I just, I wanted to thank you, Kevin, for giving this presentation because I think it is very important. And something that I meant to lift up at our last commission meeting is for everyone to take a look at our last Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo meeting. One of the things that have been very beneficial are the presentations that we've gotten. Last, I think it was the fifth or the seventh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, the last date of our last commission meeting. And I'm saying that because they are available on Facebook and on YouTube, and so you can go back and look at them. But we received presentations from, excuse me, on Alice, which is asset limited, income constrained and employed, as well as from the Michigan Poverty Task Force and Upjohn and WMed with some information that's very relevant to the work that we're working on. I also look forward to, as we're going to hear from city staff at our next committee of the whole meeting, I look forward to hearing from SBK on ways that we can spend some of those dollars with the two-generational approach. So that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I did have a quick question just for clarification for me here. So when in your chart, when some organizations are listed for two years and some for one, does that mean the number we're seeing is being divided over two years?
Correct.
Okay. Appreciate it. Any other questions? All right, seen no other questions. The recommended action is a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to sign all documents related to the implementation of the proposed Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo programs. Is there a motion?
I move that.
Motion made by Commissioner Urban? Supported by Commissioner Hess. Any more discussion? Seen none. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel.
I have to, unfortunately abstain from this one because I serve on the Kalamazoo Literacy Council Board of Directors.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Na?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next, our reports and legislation manager, Ritzman, you have a report.
Yeah, I have a couple of things, Mayor. First, I want to say how sorry I am about Mr. Woods and the business he has on the East Side and the problems they're experiencing. So our Public Safety and Community Planning Economic Development, Community Investment Team will be following up with him to see what we can do to help him out with those issues. Second, it's a bittersweet evening. Tonight is Patsy Moore, our deputy city manager's last commission meeting. If you remember, back in the budget work session, it was her last budget work session. So she'll be retiring here in a couple of weeks. And so Patsy has been with the city for over twenty-six years and she's served as my deputy city manager since the end of 2013. And she's done a tremendous job in that role. Her specialty is in operations and budgeting and finance. So she's overseeing management services, public safety, including our liaison or my liaison to the community, uh, community public safety review and appeals board, CESSBRA. She's also overseeing human resources and actually served as interim HR director at least a couple of times during her tenure here. And also was overseeing 311, our community call center. So Patsy has my complete respect. And I am so sad to be losing her as a trusted employee, a trusted colleague. And I just wish her all the best in retirement. And Patsy, you want to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Jim. It is, this is an exciting time for me. And I leave the city with so much respect for the work that all of you do and all of the administration, all of the staff at the city of Kalamazoo. I've had the honor and privilege of working with several administrations and several commissions. And I have observed over this time that these bodies, the city commission and the administration, have the best interest of the citizens of Kalamazoo at heart. We may not have always gotten it right. We probably could have done some things differently, not done some things and done some other things. But overall, I think the goal of having the interest of the citizens of Kalamazoo and visitors to Kalamazoo has been paramount. And it's been my pleasure to have been a part of that. This is, it is not because I'm tired of the work that I'm doing. I wake up every day and I have just joy at being afforded the opportunity to serve in this position. This caps almost forty years in local government, twenty-six of those here in the city of Kalamazoo. So I leave for the next phase in whatever that is. But I certainly leave with fond memories of the people at the city of Kalamazoo, those who I've worked with over these last twenty-six years. And I also leave knowing that as we move forward in the city of Kalamazoo, that the commission and the administration will continue to strive to do what's best for Kalamazoo. So thank you all and thank you for a beautiful journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Moore. I'm going to go ahead and jump in here, I guess, instead of waiting for if anyone else wants to say anything. But, you know, knew, you know, knew this was coming our way. But we did get an invite just today for recognition. I don't think that's the secret that's planned. And so I'm sure there will be more comments made there. But I just wanted to say something tonight that if you look deep into any functioning body, and I'm talking about a body that's functioning, an organization, you will find people who do not attract attention to themselves, but who are rivers that run very, very deep, who are solid and consistent and foundational and smart and committed. And just pulling back that cover and looking in, you will see that that is what allows organizations to run and to function. And Deputy City Manager Moore has been that force the entire time that I've been on the city commission. And the hard thing about this is I do not know how that will be replaced. So that has been a profound part of the work that the city's been doing is your participation, Deputy City Manager Moore. Everything you've put into it with leading with your heart every day. I really, really appreciate it. And we'll have more opportunity for more comments, but I just wanted to, I want to say that to you tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else, Manager Ritzman?
That's the end of my report.
All right. Now's the time for Commissioner comments. Commissioner Urban?
Yes, I'd like to commend Kevin Ford for his presentation this evening. That was very thorough. And I was in awe of his, his problem-solving approach. He's taking to all of this very complicated, hard-to-measure work. You know, I think of myself as a problem solver, but I work with, I used to work with technical problems which have, are easily measured and have different outcomes. He's working with human beings which are very hard to measure and outcomes are lots of times pretty fuzzy. But he isn't daunted by that. You know, he, he and his staff have been doing something that has been needed in Kalamazoo ever since I've been involved in public life, which is how to get the nonprofits in town to work together on common broad goals and to not compete against each other and to be willing to be evaluated and measured on a consistent basis. Everything that Kevin said this evening was, was encouraging to me and how he and his staff at the SBK committee has undertaken this work. And I think it could be a model for other communities. I, I think key to the success that that group has had so far has to do with the holistic approach that he takes to the issues. Maybe that two-gen thing has summarized this very well. And the fact that he's requiring the various organizations that are participating in this to work alongside each other and to share problems and successes and to collaborate smoothly. I'm just very impressed and I just hope, by my saying this, I'm impressing my constituents who sometimes kind of imagine this kind of work going on out of sight somehow and never really coming into their consciousness. As I say, to my constituents, you can trust these, you can trust this approach. This is, this is awesome. I'm enthusiastic. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Urban. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor. Just piggybacking on my colleague statements, yes, that two-gen approach, I think it's person acknowledgement that, you know, we're in this for the long haul. And it's really about that next generation. And how do we collaboratively work with, you know, the parents and the children and the, you know, the next generation? So thank you to Kevin Ford and all of those who contributed to Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo. I have to get used to not saying SBK also in these, in our meetings. To Patsy Moore, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't make a public statement myself. You know, I can appreciate someone who is willing to pray over our city. I can appreciate someone who is willing to love our community into the future. And so thank you for your years of work and dedication. I know that you will continue to be active, but you'll be active in ways that you so choose. So thank you for your service. One, please forgive my tardiness from our call meeting. I had some stuff come up and wasn't able to make it. And then last but not least, well, actually, thank you, City Manager Ritzman, for acknowledging grubs and stuff and issues that they're dealing with. If you don't mind, can you report back out to the, um, city commission on that one? And then, uh, last but not least, this is the last meeting before, uh, opening day, Run This Town, Kalamazoo. So to give you more information about that, Run This Town, Kalamazoo. It was birthed out of an organization called Networking Out. Uh, we get together and we network and then we work out. Uh, it's an opportunity for individuals from all fitness levels to essentially walk, jog, or run this town. The event is June 1st, uh, through August 31st, every Tuesday at 6:00 PM at Mayor's Riverfront Park. Uh, and again, you get an opportunity to either walk or jog a two mile loop or jog or run a three mile loop. It's a lot of fun, a lot of excitement. You know, we have a lot of different partnerships this year. Let me think, Zayo, Men of Purpose, Men Who Give, um, Professional Basketball Team, the Kalamazoo Full Times, uh, and many more. And I'm sure I'm about to get in trouble for leaving other people out. But our, our added sponsors, Fit Bellevue and Ahmad Rashad are two of the main drivers behind this opportunity. So yeah, something that's going to be fun. It's outdoor. We're going to keep it as safe as possible. I know a lot of our mask recommendations are getting loosened. But as far as our organization, we will, uh, still try to lead by example for sure. So, um, thank you again, community. I, I hope to see you out June 1st, uh, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Cunningham. Commissioner Knott?
Uh, just briefly to Patsy, you know, all the best to you, um, on this new journey, this new chapter of your life. Very well deserved. Congratulations. I look forward to seeing what you do next.
Commissioner Pradel?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. If you didn't get a chance to watch our committee, the whole meeting tonight, uh, definitely if you get a chance to watch back at it, we had a great presentation from Clerk Borling about our local municipal elections. Just get some of these stats. I just have to share these again. So I kind of boiled down his presentation. But 6,507 ballots were dropped off at five drop box locations. They had over 21,000 absentee ballots returned. And just to put that into perspective, like the high mark before that was like 6,800 back in like the 2008 presidential election. The WMU satellite location helped 987 voters, not counting the 342 people who they helped figure out vote their voting situation if they lived outside of this community. They were open 24 hours, uh, extra. So that was 16 hours more than required by law. So all those individuals who work in the clerk's office were working, you know, and spending time that they otherwise would have been with their families or doing things they enjoyed. And so just really wanted to lift up that work and, uh, their contributions, uh, to the city, uh, last year, but continuing on this year. Um, also wanted to just take a moment to, to recognize the, the Hess family and just, uh, keep you in continued prayers of speedy recovery for, for, for Jim and we're keeping you guys in our thoughts. Patsy, uh, DCM Moore, I, I just want to echo everybody's comments and just, uh, you know, applaud you on amazing career, 26 years with the city. I just, when I was working at Western, there were people left and right who were retiring, who had worked like 30, 40 years. And it just boggles this geriatric millennial's mind, um, to think that, you know, I was 10 years old when you started at the city. And so, uh, it's just, it speaks to your passion and commitment to the work that you're doing. So, uh, thank you, uh, for that. Uh, for those who have submitted ideas to us about the federal stimulus dollars, just talk off of Charday Chambers' call, please keep sending those in. You know, I think something that we're going to have to reconcile with the city is with that pot of dollars. And obviously it's based on the guidance. We have to ask ourselves, you know, do we want to impact, impact many things that need impacting? Or do we want to do something transformational? Or a couple of transformational things that are just, uh, you know, are game changing? And so those are kind of questions that we have to grapple with as a community, but we need input from everybody. Uh, and, uh, to make those decisions, uh, as a commission coming up as well. Um, and then, uh, last but not least, uh, I just wanted to also just thank again, um, Talking is Teaching folks from K-Risa who, uh, were here and presented a little bit earlier today. That is such great work. And I'm so excited to get our kids, kiddos out to, um, participate in that and, uh, get outdoors in our parks and enjoy our parks and, um, do those interactive activities. But also I wanted to, um, share as well, uh, there is, uh, a program from the Southwest Michigan STEM Group as well. And they, if you get a chance to check it out, it's, I believe it's just SWMISTEM.org. And they're very similar, uh, in terms of having offerings, uh, to inspire kids about STEM, uh, fields. And they're going to have a lot of interactive programs this summer as well. So if you get a chance to check out both Talking is Teaching, there's a Facebook group for, for them. And then the website I just mentioned for, uh, the Southwest Michigan STEM Group. It's a great way for families and kiddos, uh, to get out and enjoy the outdoors and learn a little something this summer. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Vice Mayor Griffin?
Oh, thank you. I just want to echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners. Um, and for DCM Moore, thank you for your service. Your pink and green will be missed. And best wishes to everything that you have, uh, for your very bright future ahead. And thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Few things I'd like to say. I just want to. Commissioner Hess, yeah. Excuse me, Commissioner Hess?
Uh, thank you. I just have a few things. Tonight, Michelle Gossman spoke in the invocation about gratitude, about resilience and about collaboration. Um, and so my original gratitude goes out to Patsy for, for giving us a big part of her life. Thank you. And may your encore career, whatever it is, be blessed. It's been my pleasure to know you and to know your work and how it's impacted the city. More gratitude goes to Parks and Rec. And there's like a thread of Parks and Rec that goes through these comments. The farmer's market renovation, and I, I, I don't want to steal any of Mayor's thunder, but like we had the parks, we had the, um, farmer's market groundbreaking, uh, a few, a week and a half ago. And, uh, Mayor's comments reflected the role of the marketplace and community. And, uh, what we have is something very special. It's not just a place where we sell things. It's a place where we meet people. And it's about collaborating with the people in this farmer's market. So, uh, kudos to Parks and Rec for their work on bettering this place, um, that we call our farmer's market. Um, also to the, the improvements being made in the parks. From Millam Park to La Croix Park with that new splash pad coming in, that's going to be so much fun. I'm going to go use it. I, I don't know if adults can use it, but I want to go use it too. Fraz Park here in my own neighborhood of Westwood. Fraz Park is getting two renovated, uh, sand volleyball courts. And they planted 17 or 18 trees, um, uh, working with the arborist here in Kalamazoo in Fraz Park. So thank you for that. They're beautiful. And then I'm, I'm really happy that tonight we approved the contract for the improvements at MLK Park. That is a gem in this community. That park is beautiful and it's got several people who love it, um, that, uh, continue to care for it. In, in Karen Chadwick and her MLK, um, uh, group that meets on a regular basis and Pam Rowland and the Kalamazoo Junior Girls Association. I'm really excited to see that renovation come to fruition. And, and then with the, um, Parks and Rec involvement with the Family Literacy Walk, that, uh, we are going to have that was mentioned in our proclamation for the, um, Kalamazoo Talking is Teaching. So they got kind of a thread throughout everything. And then that also intersects with our SPK, our Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo funding approval, for the entire lifespan, not just talking, talking is teaching, but throughout the entire lifespan, uh, of a person. So I love this part of our community. Um, and it's parks, it's recreation, but it's education. It's, 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 it's what we value. And we are, tonight, we, we voted on several things that, um, show what we, what it is we value. And again, thanks to Kevin Ford for bringing that forward. Lastly, personally, uh, thank you, Commissioner Pradel, for saying something. But, um, personally, we were just impacted by, uh, a sudden surgery. My husband had open heart surgery and so, um, gratitude, collaboration and resilience, uh, were, were just evident everywhere in creating the miracle that is a new life for him. All the folks at Brownson, everyone at Brownson Healthcare, thank you for that. Uh, my gratitude runs deep. For all of their kindnesses, uh, we receive nothing but kindness, um, in the care and in, um, in our, in our time of need. To friends and neighbors and family, thank you for helping us through this. We are on the other side and on our way, uh, to greater health. And, uh, we're grateful for this miracle of life. And so that said, because I was here with, with Jim at home, I could not attend the Stop the Hate Rally yesterday. And I wanted to, because I want to stop hate in Kalamazoo. Uh, I know that we talk a lot about kindness, um, here in Kalamazoo. And that's who we are and that's what we value. But, um, I definitely plan on paying all of the kindnesses that we received, uh, forward. And I will continue to grow the love in Kalamazoo. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. No, we, we share the thunder. We don't have to worry about stealing it from each other. So I'm sorry, by the way. First thing, I just wanted to, uh, remind people that this is EMS week, for first responders. And we have a contract with Life EMS here in Kalamazoo. So as you see those folks who work around the clock and are critical for saving lives here in Kalamazoo, give them a thumbs up, recognize them. Uh, thank you to all the first responders out there. That was one of the first things that, uh, Mayor Bobby Hopewell and I bonded over is that, uh, he worked at Life EMS for years. He's a paramedic. And I am a certified emergency medical technician and worked serving on ambulances for some years myself. In terms of recognizing folks, uh, this year, uh, every year, the YWCA celebrates, women, uh, who lead in the community. And that event occurred this year. It was an online style, but that was on May 13th. The Lifetime Women of Achievement, Achievement Award went to Janice Brown, a former Kalamazoo Public School Superintendent. And, uh, also she was the first, uh, director for the Kalamazoo Promise. In addition, the, uh, Dorothy, uh, Height Award for Social Justice Innovation was awarded to Nelly Fuentes. Uh, she's co-founder, co-founder of several, uh, movements in town that fight for the dignity, respect, and, uh, of immigrants here in United States. Also, uh, five other women were awarded Women of Achievement Awards. Lisette, Mira, Amaya, Diane Eberts, Leslie Lama-Reed, Danielle, Selak? Correct me if I'm not saying this right, that's Selatki, I believe, and Beth Washington. Sorry if I mispronounced that name. So thank you, YWCA, for doing that work and thank you for, uh, all the work that, uh, the women who are recognized do. The Michigan Municipal League, which we are a member of, uh, regularly has an awards gala. And in 2020, like most everything else, it was, uh, online, not in person. But one person who was recognized at that gala this year was our former mayor, BJ Hopewell. And he received the Michael A. Guido Leadership and Public Service Award. And I want to congratulate him for that. Uh, he didn't get the benefit of having a, uh, you know, a gathering to celebrate that. Lovely picture of him in the Michigan Municipal League Magazine that we all get to see. But, uh, to remind folks, uh, as they mentioned, he was elected to the Kalamazoo City Commission in 2003, elected mayor in 2007, longest-serving mayor in the history of Kalamazoo, co-founder of the Kalamazoo Foundation for Excellence. And as we heard tonight, uh, still a member of the Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo Board and a regular communicator via text and all manner of things about good ideas of things that we should be doing here in the city of Kalamazoo. And I'm sure we all benefit from those regular communications. It's always make me feel like I'm not doing enough. So thank you, Mayor, and, uh, that is a well-deserved recognition. I appreciate the work that we're doing. I appreciate the comments about being very thoughtful and careful about this money that's coming our way and that we intend to do. Uh, I've got some ideas about that as well. We certainly want to make trans, you know, transformational investments in the city. Uh, but there may be some things that we want to make sure that we also focus on very, very quickly this summer. So, uh, more to come on that. And I'm hoping we'll be able to move quickly with some of those ideas. Kalamazoo, keep your hearts open. I love you, Kalamazoo. We're adjourned.